Okay, we're good to go.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the time is now seven twelve. Beeden, I'm Roger Daly, I have the chair for Seventeen. The Beeden has officially concluded. We'll begin with our chairman's report. So, good evening, everyone. Please remember our rules of time. Please keep comments, two minutes, and only address the chair of whatever the chair for the board. Um, only. Drop any amount of questions for the board or the question we have at the agency on this side. Lots of people for that, um, when the NYPD come up, uh, that's. Still injured or whatever, but yeah. Captain Seven comes up with NYPD. He started referring to questions about our cars, speak to Detective Skinner on the side who talked about the. What's happening in our part. I'm concerned that especially the second story. This is back this month. Though that there is a bit of push to the high push away from. Cultural identifying, uh.
Frations, but I will continue to celebrate and ask people to think about innovations and impact. Um, that has happened through Black History and on the likes through our society. As you discuss with your friends and families in your circles. It's with sadness that I say that, uh, our Chair of, um, of Public Safety. And Transportation has had to resign for a number of reasons and, um, Ozzy Lewis. And I want to thank him publicly for his service, for his years of service as a chair and also as a member of the board. He has been a stalwart for our community. On that note, I don't see her in the audience as yet, but when she gets here, I will. Continue to acknowledge her, um, our new Chair of Public Safety will be Khadija Aluwo. Um, she will now be starting the helm as Chair of the Public Safety and Transportation. I did send out a few emails today to identify her as the new Chair of Public Safety and Transportation. Uh, um, Chair Berlat, please stand. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like, uh, actually no, let's do the opposite. Chair Berlat, please be seated. Everyone else, please stand. I would like to take a moment of silence, uh. Did last week. Uh, what's the date exactly? No, the date of death. On February third, uh, Berlat lost her father, um, and so I would just like to take a moment of silence. With the, with the, with the, um. I forgot the word I'm looking for, from the audience, from the board members, if it's okay with the board members. Take a moment of silence to recognize her father in this moment of her grief and her family's grief. Is that okay with the board? May soul rest in peace. I would also like to extend condolences to Dr. Cal Renaud, who's away. Um, she has also lost a family member. She had to actually fly. On an emergency trip down for the burial of a family member, so keep, please keep her in your, in her prayers, in your prayers as, um. As she travels and be with family. Um, SUNY Downstate will have a meeting on February twenty seventh at Mega Everts. Um, you'll be talking about that as well, right? All right, um, our second vice chair and Chair of Social Services will talk about that as well. I, I had the opportunity to attend one here in, right here, uh, in Downstate. And so it was, if, if you have concerns, comments about SUNY Downstate. Please, uh, refer to Chair Oney and the Social Services Joint Committee. Her next meeting is on Monday, right, the twenty fourth, and she will talk about her committee and what they're doing. To assist with SUNY Downstate. I had the pleasure and also, uh, our Chair Afrey will talk about it as well, to be in a meeting with, uh, the, the. Eight, our government agencies with an issue, and I could never pronounce this name right, the Costale. Uh, on Troy Avenue and to see, we've had two meetings and that discussion will continue. Um, we do have a letter from the City Council Member, um, that was sent off to the state agency to deal with the issues as the community has relate. Has related to us. Our newsletter and Constant Contact are up. Please sign up to receive, uh, notification. And while your friends and family are not looking and you know they need to get involved, sign them up too. All right, so they, they'll get the information and chairs and committee members, board members. Please send out information to highlight what it is that you're doing within the community. Um. And that ends my report. Thank you. Are there any questions? Read me to my report. Okay, with that being said, District Managers, now here we'll bring up our Assistant District Manager.
So, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
Okay, great. So, good evening, everyone. Um, Ms. Frazier was unable to make it today, so I will be covering for her. For those of you who don't know, my name is Notion Farah. I'm the Assistant District Manager for Community Board Seventeen. And I want to begin tonight with a happy belated Valentine's Day and happy Black History Month. And I will move on to some updates from the CB Seventeen office. So, the first thing I want to mention is the newsletter which Mr. Daly has previously mentioned, which is that we have officially launched our monthly newsletter. And many of you have already received our first edition. Uh, going forward, we encourage our community partners and elected officials to send any flower, flyers or announcements to NFarah@cb.nyc.gov for inclusion. And that's Farah without an H. Uh, the newsletter will always be published the day after our general board meeting, so the next edition will be out tomorrow. And the one after that will be on March twentieth. If you'd like to join the newsletter, the, the signup form is on the homepage of the CB Seventeen website, or you can find me anywhere here and I will sign you up there. Speaking of websites, over the next month, I received training from OTI in ways to improve our website's accessibility, making sure we comply with Local Law Twenty Six. To make sure that our website is accessible to those with disabilities. You've already, uh, you might have already noticed some structural changes to the website and I'm working on implementing some well-needed updates to make sure that.
All right. I've always been ready to have conversation. It's a joy.
I'm sorry, person online, can you please mute yourself? Please mute yourself online. Thank you.
They muted themselves. Okay. So, uh, the next thing is that we've been working on updating our committee meetings to the CB Seventeen YouTube channel, so you might have seen, if you're subscribed, you'll see a bunch of YouTube videos being batch uploaded. And next up, on February thirteenth, Ms. Wilkerson and I attended a workshop hosted by Urban Land Institute to better understand New York City rezoning processes and procedures. If you're interested of learning about the organization or any future events or workshops, it's open to the public. I will include their information in tomorrow's newsletter. The next matter I'd like to discuss is Decastol, which Mr. Daly has already mentioned, so I'll keep it brief. On February thirteenth, CB Seventeen organized and hosted a virtual meeting regarding Decastol carding's permit for continued operations and proposed reconfigurations at fourteen eighty-one Troy Avenue. After the meeting, we sent a follow-up letter to Decastol along with outstanding questions to the community. The Land Use and Rezoning Committee will provide more information in their committee reports. I wanted to take a moment to thank Chair Afrey and Chair Wilkinson for leading this effort, Ms. Frazier for organizing and facilitating the meeting. Uh, Councilmember Farah Lewis and Assemblymember Monique Chandler Waterman's offices for listening to community concerns and actively working on this issue. I would also like to thank Chair Daly. And last but not least, I would like to thank Mr. George Tate for bringing this to the community's attention. Your dedication to public service is always, is an inspiration to all of us. And lastly, uh, Community Board Seventeen is looking to hire a full-time community associate. Please refer to the copies in the back for specifics about the job posting. The posting is currently on the website and will also be distributed via our monthly newsletter. This position is open to the public and will be accepting resumes till the end of March. And that concludes my report. Does anyone have any questions?
Um, the Constant Contact.
Yes.
Um, can, can somebody? If they want to sign up, they have to send you an email or can they sign up through Constant Contact?
They can sign up, uh, so the actual signup form is in the front page of our website, so if you go to the homepage and you scroll down, you'll see it there. Um, but if you're having difficulties, you can always find me anywhere or send me an email and I'll get you situated.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for the Assistant District Manager? Is that a question, Mr. Frim? No? Okay. All right, uh, thank you very much. Next on the agenda will be committee reports. Again, committee members, you're asked to submit reports. If you have not and you do have a report, please make sure that you stay within two minutes. All right, uh, the budget is not here, however, um, for all of the committee members, and if you're not a committee member. Um, on the website, am I correct as well? That the, the ask from the Budgetary Committee has been posted. So for any of you who need a copy of FY twenty-five, twenty-six, whatever the requests. The, you can get a copy of the email and it will be posted on the website as well. Yeah, thank you very much. All right, Mr. McKee had to be called away and so he's not here. Um, Commerce Chair.
Testing, testing, one, two, three. Uh, good evening, everyone. Hope you're doing well. Hassan Bakrdine, Commerce Committee Chair. So just want to go through this really, really quick. Uh, we had a number of successful walkthroughs, uh, in the community where the committee members as well as representatives from, uh, New York Small Business Services and the Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce, along with Councilmember Lewis's office. Uh, where we go in and actually talk to the business owners, so we, we, uh, did a walkthrough on Avenue D. Uh, this is the second round of a business walkthrough, uh, on February twenty-fourth, which was very successful. We walked from Albany Avenue, uh, to, um, sorry, it's February, February fourth. We, we walked all the way from Albany Avenue to East Fifty-third. Uh, we had another walkthrough just yesterday at Nostrand Avenue, which was extremely successful as well. Um, and again, we got a lot of great information, talking to the business owners, really talking about their specific challenges. So, uh, we're going to continue to do that. We do have one scheduled for, uh, May, I'm sorry, February twenty-eighth with, um, the Commissioner for New York Small Business Services as well as. Randy Chambers from the Brooklyn Chamber, he's the CEO of that, so we're going to be doing that at a number of different sites, um, and, uh, sort of closing out the month on that. Uh, update on the Business Networking Breakfast, uh, on which tentative, we have a date for March twenty-sixth at SUNY Downstate, so I'll keep you guys posted on that. The reason why we haven't got the date set yet is that it, it's decided by committee in terms of us having it, so. Uh, gone are the days that we had one person to talk to and we got it, so we're waiting on that. Uh, and then we have lastly, I don't know, I think that's it. I'm done. Thank you very much and I'll talk to you guys soon.
Thank you, Chair Bakrdine. Now we'll have, uh, education followed by. Uh. Res, slash, rezoning.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gil Grandison. I'm the Chair of Youth and Education. Um, just quickly. Youth happening for this year, you might have seen the flyers at the back. Um, the scheduled date is Thursday, August seventh. You will be receiving more information around it, but I ask if you can please put it on your calendars. And if you want to volunteer, donate or anything, you want to contribute for the event, please reach out to Ms. Farah at the Board Office. And she will assist you or guide you on how you can contribute or donate to us. Um, Sesame Flyers is having a teen sip and paint on February twenty-eighth. Please reach out, um, to them for more information. It's at five P M. Um, if you're able, you're available and you have young kids or teenagers, please go out and celebrate. Um, sip and paints are usually a lot of fun. And the SYEP applications for twenty twenty-five are now available. You can go online and just type in SYEP, the website will come up, but I will have Ms. Farah send out this information to the members tomorrow. And our committee meetings are every second Wednesday of the month. Next month, um, February twelfth, we will have Ms. Smith.
March.
I'm sorry, March twelfth, thank you. Um, Ms. Smith from Uncommon Schools will be giving a presentation about the school and the programs that it offers, so, um. Please join us, um, for that meeting. Thank you.
And Uncommon Schools is, Ms. What is Uncommon Schools?
Uncommon School is a public charter school and there are a couple of them in our communities, so she will be speaking more around them, their location and what programs, um, they have for the community.
All right, and as a former educator, I can tell you that Uncommon Schools has one of the better charter schools in the city, um, citywide. Um, rezoning. Followed by parks and beautification. Pardon me?
Seems like everyone spoke about it already, but I'll touch on it. Um, good evening, everyone. My name is Kwame McRae and I'm the Land Use Committee Chair. Let us make it noise for audio. Um, on January twenty-third, a public hearing was held for Decastol Carding, which has been spoken about, it's a business that's located on fourteen eighty-one Troy Avenue, between Farragut and Glenwood. Um, I attended the meeting along with various other committee or community board and residents. Um, it was, um, interesting meeting, given various forms of information that was distributed, but, um, the sentiment of the meeting was that. Um, they didn't really do a great job of notifying not only the directly impacted residents, um. Along with various offices, including our own, which we thank George Tate for being the whistleblower for that. Subsequently, we followed that conversation and continued into my land use committee meeting or our land use committee meeting on February sixth, which we touched on it. And then ultimately, that ended up being trend, um, that ended up turning into an ultimate open forum meeting on February thirteenth, which we gave. Um, more than adequate notification, I believe, to the residents to attend and created a forum and platform for them to actually be able to give us their questions, which we subsequently. Um, we submitted to the business the following day and, um, we gave them a deadline for the twenty-first, which I think is Friday. And then ultimately, um, should we get confirmation from the business and our, um, agency that will be giving them or potentially be awarding them the permit that they're seeking. Um, the March sixth land use committee meeting would be dedicated to that forum and for that business, and I want to make that clear. So look out for any notifications that's going to confirm that. Once we receive confirmation from both parties. Um, if you're affected, I feel like everybody should be interested in what's going on with this particular business, being the nature of the business, the history that the business has had, um, in the neighborhood. And, you know, it's something that's coming in the future, so I thank everybody that came and attended and that ends my report. Can I take that? All right. Good? Questions?
Chair Wilkinson, you have anything to add? No? All right, perfect. Thank you. Uh, are there any questions? Yes, please step to the mic right here, please. State your name, the young man in the hat right there. You had, you raised your hand. It was waving. Oh, oh. Gotcha. Uh, Parks and Beautification, followed by, um, Sanitation, he's not here. I'm still making, excuse me. Followed by Social Services.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Bialot Otwone. I'm the Chair for the Parks and Beautification Committee. We had our meeting on February fourth, where we had, uh, three presenters. And among them, we had Daniel Iriela from, um, Councilwoman Farah Lewis's office, talking about capital improvement for the parks. I know that you all need to have, you want to have beautiful parks, however, there was a process for that and Daniel will be back on March fourth to answer your question about, uh, Potager Park and Children's Park. Because we are working with the elected officials to see how we can have nice parks for you. Uh, also on March fourth, we'll have a presentation on plant poisoning. Plants are nice and beautiful, however, some plants have poison as well. You need to be educated on that, so we'll have the Department of Health coming for a presentation on plant poisoning. Um, we are also working with public schools for a compost project to teach the kids how to use compost, to have, you know, nice plants and, um, what to do or to sort. Uh, things that can become compost, so for that, if you want to volunteer, if you are a teacher who is here, you want to work with us, please see me, I'm sitting in the back. We can talk about how you can get involved. Also, we'll be doing park cleanup. If you want your community group or schools to be part of the park cleanup group, let us know. Usually we do that on Friday or Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions for Parks and Beautification? Questions? Um. It's two thirty-five. And my level, and this goes through and, um, Chair Grandison, now between the student or the farmers, uh, with the farmers market. Um, and so let's connect with the principals to ensure that the community is aware that they have fresh produce for students, all right? Thank you. With Chair.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mazraad Oney. I am Chair of the Social Services Committee. The Social Services Committee is currently planning our May Health Fair. Um, so if you would like to participate or contribute, please reach out, um, to the Board Office and they will connect you with me. Um, and the other thing I wanted to mention, as Chair Daly did bring up, is that, um, the second hearing, um, to direct funding for SUNY Downstate. Downstate is going to be next Thursday at six P M. at Mega Evers, the Bedford Cap Campus. To be clear, SUNY Downstate is saved already. This is not a saved SUNY Downstate meeting. Um, the governor hasn't officially announced she is not closing it, but she is, um, she's directed a significant investment into Downstate. And so the question is for community members to share input on how they think that investment should be made. So if you have experience with Downstate and you think that there are maternal issues, maternal health issues that want to be addressed or, um, you know, facilities issues, or you want to see more community education, that's the type of input that's being looked for at this meeting. If you have ideas, again, you can contact the District Office, um, or Board Office, or you can message me at, um, cbseventeensocialservices@gmail.com. Um, we're putting together a letter with some opinions from the Social Services Committee, so we'd love to have more, um, input, so that would be written. But then also, if you would like to attend next Thursday, six P M., um, at Mega Evers. Thank you.
Okay, questions? Okay, seeing none. We have, uh, personnel. Somebody had a question? Yes, go ahead, step forth, use the mic. And state your name, please. Personnel, please just come to the mic, so this will be called you. Be ready.
Donna McLean, not a formal, formal question, but was asking you to repeat that contact information.
Got it. Um, that's cbseventeensocialservices@gmail.
Okay. Um, Madam Chair.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Rose Graham, Chair of the Personnel Committee, and as, um, Assistant District Manager, Ms. Farah shared that, um, the board is in the process. Of hiring a full-time community associate to, you know, ensure the work of the board is taking place. And we will be collecting resumes and we'll keep the board posted as the process moves along, and that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, I just want to add one thing real fast to. We want to become an associate. It is important that if you know somebody, is looking for a full-time position, has benefits for one K, they're good stuff. Um. And they are interested in community work, just have them apply. The straight salary is on the site, it's on the screen. And we can continue to ask for individuals, because even if they have a job and no one is applying, then you're not really looking for a job. All right, so let's, let's try to get that going. All right, I thank you very much. Um, Mr. Westcott is not here. Um, Communications Chair. Uh. No comment? Okay, Bylaws is Tricia. I didn't see her. Um. And the bookman at the cab is also Tricia, she's not here. Uh, Captain Schillinger? You're up.
Good evening, all. Um, in this portion, we're entering the Agency Update section. Just please be mindful of the timer on the screen, um, so that we can, um, be mindful of the time constraints and the space. Thank you.
Five, five.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Captain Schillinger from the six-seven precinct. I'm a commanding officer, Deputy Inspector Cozak could not, uh, attend, uh, tonight's meeting, so, you know, I'll be here to, uh, uh, ask some questions for you. And, uh, I'm going to give you a, a brief, uh, a brief view, overview of what we're seeing so far in twenty twenty-five, uh, this year in the six-seven precinct. Um, you know, happy to report right now, uh, down overall crime, fourteen percent. Um, you know, robberies down, felony assaults down, burglaries, grand larcenies all down, uh, really, uh, due, in due part, uh, to the hard work, um, for the men and women in the six-seven precinct. Uh, you know, we're continuing, uh, you know, historic, a, a great trend from twenty twenty-four, we saw, uh, historic lows in shooting incidents. Mainly due to a hundred and eighty-five gun arrests, a hundred and forty-two guns removed from the street. So we're going to continue to work really hard and, and strive to beat, to beat those numbers from last year to, to ensure that the community is safe. That's our number one priority. Um, you know, I know, uh, they mentioned about, uh, parking conditions here in the six-seven precinct. Uh, last year, three hundred and two cars were towed, uh, in the year of twenty twenty-four. Uh, so we're looking, uh, obviously to continue that trend, uh, to ensure that, uh, your, uh, you know, these complaints for these, uh, double parked cars and derelict vehicles are answered. Uh, you know, we have another tow operation scheduled for tomorrow, it's a joint operation with the Department of, uh, DHS and Sanitation. Uh, we have one scheduled for tomorrow. We have another tow operation scheduled for March sixth. That will go from March sixth until March seventh as well, uh, where we're going to look to address any, uh, uh, community issues with the parking conditions, so I can assure you that.
Um, can you just, are you finished?
Yeah.
Can you just, three, uh, instances that happened recently within our district, the book, two on Ninety-third and one in Beverly?
Um, in terms of, um, you know, all I can say is the investigation is ongoing with our detective squads. Um, uh, you know, a number of those incidents are isolated, uh, so, uh, you know, there's only so much I can comment to this point. But, um, you know, it's ongoing and our squad is working very hard on those specific incidents.
Were there any arrests or anything of the sort or?
Um, uh, two, two of the incidents, we do have arrests on, uh, those are the isolated incidents. I can't speak too much further on it. Uh, and then the squad, the other two incidents, uh, are still in ongoing investigation.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Captain Schillinger? Wow, none. All right, perfect, awesome, thank you.
Uh, our NCO officers are in the back. If anybody has any specific questions that they, they might want to answer, they're there to help you, so anything that you might need, please feel free to, you know, to go back there and, uh, and, um, ask them whatever, you know, whatever concerns that you may have.
All right, Sarge, do you have anything you can add or? All right, all right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you. All right, agencies, are there any other agencies? Come on up. Agency, please line up, um. Oh, question for them? Oh. Oh.
If you are an agency representative, please line up to the side of the podium just once again. Thank you. May proceed.
All right. Hello. Hi. Um, so my name is Stephanie. So I'm the branch manager at the rugby um branch of Brooklyn Public Library. I'm just here with a couple of updates for myself and the two other branches that are um part of C B seventeen. As many of you know, Clarendon Library is officially reopened. It opened at the end of January. Um, and their events calendar is on the the desk in the back, so if you want to see any upcoming events for them. Currently, they will be offering a teen photography boot camp, which starts in April in collaboration with Brick and Councilmember Farah Louis's office. And teens thirteen through eighteen can apply now. So if you have any teens in your life and they're interested in photography, you might want to grab a flyer in the back. Um, B P L also opened a brand new library of for arts and culture in downtown Brooklyn. It's located right next to BAM. So if you're in that area, you can also check it out. Um, the Center for Brooklyn History has a new exhibition um called Traces that opened at the end of January. Um, just a little bit about that. If you're interested, um, Brooklyn's history of slavery has shaped the borough for centuries. And this exhibition encourages visitors to confront this legacy of oppression on our ancestors and enrich our collective understanding of the present. Um, and this exhibition runs through the end of August, so you have time to see that. Um, James Baldwin photo exhibit is still on view at the Central Library. If you haven't caught that yet, um, it'll be up until March fifteenth. Um, currently at the Rugby Branch, we have free tax help on Tuesdays. You do need to make an appointment. That me, sorry. Um, and other branches throughout the system also do have free tax help. Some are by appointment, some are walk-in. So if you um are looking for that, we have that free. Um, and then coming up at the East Flatbush Branch, this Friday, they have, you can pick up free seeds from their seed library. They also have a teen art night um that Friday night. On Monday, the twenty fourth, ah, I'm so bad at this. Um, on Monday, the twenty fourth, they have an adult writing circle, and then they have a start your own podcast program that's going to be in March. And the flyers for all of those events are in the back. Um, thank you. And any questions?
Um, just a good question. I wish to do immigration paperwork. Do they still do that? So I D N Y C, that's still something that's been done.
Yes, so I D N Y C is something that is still done at the Central Library. You do need to call three one one and make an appointment in order to go and get your I D N Y C. Um, immigration paperwork, I would have to get back to you because I I, to my knowledge, I I don't think that we do specifically, but we do have an immigration um outreach department. So I would have to get back to you.
Okay, I'm sure we'll see you that time.
Okay.
All right. All right, thank you.
All right. Have a good evening. Thank you.
All right, um, Tyrone, comments? Natasha? Comments? Any other agencies besides those two? Yeah, I'm sorry, one second. Young lady in the back, you raised your hand as an agency? Okay.
Uh, good evening, everyone. I hope you're doing well. Um, actually, my first C B seventeen meeting for the year. So it's actually good to say, everyone. My name is Tyrone McDonald, and I'm with Nibbitt Housing Services of Brooklyn. I just want to share some upcoming events that we're having. Um, on Wednesday, February the twenty-sixth, we're having a free lunch and learn. Uh, workshop series is based on health with in conjunction with Prospect Park Alliance and also the United Way. It's going to be held at the Flatbush Library at twenty-two Linden Boulevard on the second floor, and it's going to be from twelve P M. To two P M. There will be refreshments and the topic um at hand would be maternal health. I do have some flyers in the back, also an extra one here if you want to take a copy of the Q R code. On Tuesday, February the twenty-fifth at six P M., we have our um periodic landlord training course um for anyone who either a small landlord or think about being a small landlord, two family, three family. Um, it is free. Um, we go over best practices, um Fair Housing Act, your responsibilities as a landlord, um and so forth and so forth. That's going to be once again Tuesday, February the twenty-fifth at six P M. Now, in conjunction with Councilmember Farah Louis, uh, on Monday, February the twenty-fourth, there'll be a homeowner benefit information session. This will be held at Nazareth Regional High School at four seventy-five East Fifty-seventh Street. And that will be from five P M. To seven P M. All right. Some of these information is on our website, so if you have any more um details, you can always go to our website at N H S Brooklyn dot O R G. Uh, I apologize for not bringing um any flyers on this, but um we'll be there, but uh State Senator Myrie is having a housing fair uh on Saturday from twelve P M. To four P M. Uh, that will be at uh Central Library at ten Grammy Plaza. And uh we'll be there. So if you're a tenant, if you're a homeowner, first time home buyer, if you're unhoused and you're looking for resources, feel free to be there. Once again, that's a Saturday, February the twenty-second, from twelve P M. To four P M. At the Central Library at ten Grammy Plaza. I'll be around if you have any questions. Um, N H S's telephone number, seven one eight four six nine four six seven nine. We're here to help you whether you're a first time home buyer, homeowner, or tenant. Thank you and um look forward to speak with you.
I want questions for Tyrone. I'm sorry, young lady, can you, I I know it's not the session, but can you just come up as well, please? Dad?
Good evening, everybody. Good evening. Um, I'm the.
I'm sorry. Miss Daniels, did you have a question? Did you raise your hand or? I'm sorry, you're not Miss Daniels. Did you raise your hand?
My hand. I was just saying that um.
Step to the mic and state your name, please.
Okay. My name is Norma Watson. I'm, I was just saying that if I should step to the side also because I'm a part of the meeting for the vote on my event space.
No, not yet.
Not yet. Okay.
No problem.
Hello. Good evening, everybody. Um, I'm Natasha Steva, the Director of the Yard.
Just put your mic close to your assistant.
Say that again?
Your mic.
I was not loving them. Hello, you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm Natasha Steva, Director of the East Flatbush Family Enrichment Center. We will be opening on June, excuse me, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-five. Our grand opening is open to community. It's also open to organizations. It's open to businesses to come by and celebrate with us. It's a ribbon cutting starting at eleven A M. Flyers in the back for you to register. Also, we have a survey for our community members and also community organizations to fill out about different, about different offerings, which are events and different um resources that you would like to see in the community that we can bring through the yard. Also, we have our PAC interest meeting coming up. Is the PAC team is the Parent Advisory Council. Those are individuals that will be assigned to the F E C where they'll be able to help us decide on what happens next and how the money gets spent. Um, this is a community-led organization, community-led community center, so we can't do nothing without the voice of the people. So we need East Flatbush to come up and let us know what they need to see and what they need in the community. And um you can contact us at eastflatbushfec at risingground.org. Thank you.
I have a question. Hi, here. Would you mind reiterating the yard's address for us, please? Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Cunningham, you can join the line. Go ahead. Go ahead, come on up, step on up.
Happy New Evening, everyone. How you doing? All right, thank you. My name is Brenna J. Lewis, and I'm representing Haitian Centers Council. We're at thirty-eight oh seven Church Avenue. We are a Haitian-based organization, but we serve everybody. If you come to the door and you need some help, we're going to do what we can to make sure you get what you need, right? And so we have mental health services. Uh, we have a be well community is what we like to call it. We have many different therapists available to meet many different needs. We know grief has been a very big thing in our community, and we welcome anyone over the age of eighteen to come on in and join the community. And let's have conversation that could help create healthier families, right? Because we ain't really having some of these conversations at home. And so that's why we're there to do uh mental health counseling. We also support the L G B T Q communities as well with supportive services, with testing. And um we need to have more conversations. Sometimes we shy away from these things, but it's happening. We need to talk to our babies, talk to our teenagers. Um, even some adults could use some education too. And um we have other things going on too. Oh, Fit B K. Fit B K. Is a really grow, a really super dope and growing um fitness class that we have at Flatlands Reform Church every Thursday at seven P M. It's free. We welcome everyone to come on now, bring your families, bring your babies, and just have a good time. If you have any questions, you can call me directly at seven one eight nine four zero two two zero zero. My extension is one two four. Again, the organization's name is Haitian Centers Council. Does anyone have any questions? Not one? Okay, that's good. I'll have some flyers in the back for you. Thank you so much for this time. Have a great night.
Thank you, Sabrina. Mr. Cunningham? Are there any other agencies? Okay.
Can I, can I speak tonight? When he's.
I'm sorry, um, who's that?
Hi, Arna Lipkin from I D C C.
From where?
I D C C Connect.
Okay, I D C Connect. What is that?
Uh, that's our mental health clinic, but I want to let the gentleman who's standing up.
Okay, I'll let you after Mr. Cunningham, give me one.
Please, thank you.
Well, good evening to everyone. Um, as most of you know, I'm Asher Cunningham, um, a board member, but I'm coming to you today to reintroduce myself. Still a board member, um, but I am currently um the Vice President, Community Manager with J P Morgan Chase um for Flatbush. And so I wanted to introduce myself within this capacity. Um, if you didn't know, um, J P Morgan Chase has made a twenty billion dollar commitment into communities of color like Flatbush and East Flatbush. And so that's what my role is centered around. And so my role is really focused on working with nonprofits, small businesses, government entities to really bring the breadth of chase into the community. So I'm the face of Chase, working with every, all entities within the community. Community Board Seventeen, Community Board Nine, Community Board Fourteen, to really bring chase and everything that Chase does within the community to really uplift the community. Um, so I would really love to partner with all the nonprofits, the businesses, small businesses. Um, and I'm really your connect into the world of Chase, whatever you will need business-wise um to really move this community and all communities across Brooklyn forward. Just note that in Brooklyn, there are five committee managers and Flatbush, which I'm the committee manager. I'm the committee manager for Flatbush. There's a committee manager in Crown Heights and other places within Brooklyn. So I would love to connect with many of you. Again, Asher Cunningham, Vice President, Community Manager with J P Morgan Chase.
My first question is, does Community Board Seventeen get some money since you said on your board? That's my first question.
We can talk offline to see, I I'm not going to donate any money. Um, but again, my role really, I bring a lot of the services and all of the other partners within the one Chase world. So that means corporate social responsibility, um, and others who can also fund organizations. But just know that my role is focused around financial health, financial literacy, and is a, is a starting point in those conversations.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes. Um, the person online? Go ahead. Oh, I'm sorry. Are there any questions for Mr. Cunningham? Yes. Room card.
I don't have any on me, but um I can give you my email address. I'll come to you.
Okay, the person online.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. My name is Arna Lipkin. I've attended the meetings before, but I couldn't get there tonight. Sorry about that. My name is Arna. I am part of I D C C, which is Interboro Development Community Center. It's a mental health clinic. We serve all ages starting at one. Um, we also do psychiatric evaluations, which is actually very important for if anyone is looking for supportive housing. You need a psychiatric and social evaluation. We do family counseling, individual. Um, and I am actually part of what's called the Connect Program. I've spoken about this in the past. In short, we do uh casework. We help with vocational, we have peers, and we have our own therapists that actually go out to the community to meet people. If they want to have their session at a coffee shop, at the library, we also do that. And last part of our announcement I wanted to mention, we have a L S A Young People's Recovery, which is substance abuse. We have, it's right here in our clinic. It's an amazing program, great staff, and that's outpatient substance abuse. The peers go with you to appointments. We work with the D A's office, have um different educational programs, career programs, so it's a full service program. Thank you so much for having me. I will hope to be there next month with my flyers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lipkin. Any questions for Mr. Lipkin?
Well, let me just give my number really quickly. Um, I have, my own number is nine two nine six seven seven oh oh six oh. That's nine two nine six seven seven oh oh two oh. You can call our office too and then ask for connect um at seven one eight seven seven eight oh four eight five to get an intake. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great evening. Thank you.
No problem. Mr. Sun, did you have anything that you wanted to add? I know you called your name earlier. Do you have anything to add? Um, Miss O, sign, can you just step forward real fast? And then you go back to sign in, please. All right, ladies and gentlemen, this is Khadija Alubal. Um, she is now the Chair of Public Safety and Transportation, so please welcome her. Would you like to say hi to the, would you like to say hi? Not that you're late, just that you're signing in. That's all I said. I didn't say anything else. Okay, questions, by the way? Um, the agency, community session, George, you have something you want to add? Agency, step on up. Still community session. The other community session. Any other community session? That means anybody from the community who has something they would like to say. I see you. Go ahead, Mr. Tate.
Good evening, everyone. Yeah, my name is George Tate, for those who don't know me. Um, I'm here as a co-chair at the Brooklynwide Intereducational Council for the Aging. I want to invite everyone to our next meeting. We meet the fourth Wednesday of every month at Borough Hall from ten o'clock, from ten to twelve. Well, from nine thirty to ten, they have breakfast, then the meeting starts at ten o'clock. Uh, they are advocates for the aging. They are a harm at the New York statewide senior council. Okay, I left a few flyers regarding a webinar that we have in, they have in on the twenty-fifth. They're also, I also left flyers regarding the Medicare fraud that's happening. So I don't see a lot of seniors over here, but I'm sure we, those of us who are, what, those of you who are seniors uh have some seniors at home. So if you don't have, the flyers run out. I was promised that it will be going out in the newsletter from Community Board Seventeen. So please check that the Community Board Seventeen newsletter. And if you have any questions regarding either one of the two things that I mentioned, please see me. I'll be right over there. Thank you very much. I hope to see you on Wednesday at Borough Hall.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Tate. Welcome to the work. I thought you were retired. All right, next. I think if you have the legislative, so all the people represent the legislature, please step to the mic to my left.
Go ahead.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Miss Cook. From, I live at two eighty-two East Thirty-Fifth Street, Brooklyn, New York. I'm a member of the community. I'm here this evening, standing on behalf of residents of the community of District, Community Board District Seventeen to hereby call for the members of Community Board Seventeen to remove Chair Daly from the position of Chair of C B seventeen. According to your bylaws, a member can be removed. According to your bylaws, a member can be removed for cause of misconduct, neglect of duty, which materially affects his official acts and reflects badly upon his character and his board. We have witnessed Chair Daly blatant abuse of authority by interrupting and/or preventing members of the community from speaking on community concerns and or sharing information. We have witnessed Chair Daly attempt to convince you to remove one of your own longstanding board members while refusing to address the reasons why, why, whilst simultaneously using valuable community meeting time to do so. On the Chairman Daly's administration, we have seen a reduction in the board's committees, which were designed to mirror the city agencies to better save community concerns citing the lack of staff due to work, due to the work to maintain the committees, Community Board Seventeen.
I'm sorry, Ms. Cook. One second.
Interrupting me, Mr. Daly, you. I am on the, when I'm on, I try to speak, you tell me I could not speak. I have to wait another month. I am sitting now.
Can I finish my statement, please? As a community member, you know.
No, don't interrupt me.
I'm still speaking.
Community Board Seventeen has historically maintained a staff of four full employees, district manager, community coordinator, and two community associates. Under the current administration, the office staff has crumbled and the service to the community has suffered, which reflects badly upon the board. I am going to continue as a community member, a person in the community. Everybody's afraid of Mr. Daly for some reason. The bylaws read as follows. Pursuant to the Community Board Seventeen bylaws dated April 17, 2024. Pages three, removal of Officer Four. You can, I'm citing it so you can go and look for yourself.
Pardon me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Pardon me, I'm sorry to interrupt.
District Seventeen.
Pardon me.
Chairman Daly should be.
I did allow for you to have additional time, but unfortunately, as a matter of equity, your time must be yielded.
Being documented in.
As a matter of equity, your time must be yielded. I'm sorry. It's just out of fairness. Everyone did abide by the timing.
I am going to have the media here next time I come.
It's okay. I, I mean no disrespect your way. Your words, your words are respected, but for the sake of time, we have to be equitable. This is your first official vote.
You are pushing us, you're leaning on us.
This is your first, I'm sorry.
Sergeant, no, let her finish. Just let her finish. Let her finish.
This, this is not an appropriate use of time. Pardon me. You cannot co-opt the meeting space, ma'am. Ma'am, you cannot co-opt the meeting space.
Have the officer removed.
I'm sorry, we cannot forcefully. So. Cook, I said.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you for your remarks.
Hold on.
Thank you.
Hold on. Ms. Cook. Thanks for your comments. Next.
All right, point of order. Um, just for the record, to be clear, what Mr. Daly just said was, we cannot forcefully remove.
Exactly.
For the record, I just want to be clear. No one is trying to forcefully move anyone. But the sergeant-at-arms is the person whose job it is to keep us to time and to keep the mic in control of whoever's allowed to be speaking. And that's why Ms. Wilkerson, who is a board member, who is the sergeant-at-arms, tried to stop when you went over time. But as a community member, you absolutely have the opportunity, the right to express yourself. And no one is trying to stop you from expressing yourself. I just want to make that clear for the record.
Thank you, Chair Oni. And just to reiterate, you know, I am here to help offer support as it relates to anyone's needs, meaning if you feel any particular concerns in the space with your voice being heard or not being heard. I am in red. I should be hopefully visible enough for everyone to see me in the space. Know that you can come to me. Your words are respected when you are up at the podium, but please, I am an enforcer of time and will hold that accountability for everyone equitably in this space. So kindly, may we resume with the gentleman at the podium, if that's okay, Chair Daly. I'll reset the timer.
One second. Just to be clear, I want to be very clear. Every community member has the right to speak and express their opinion. And as a chair, that is my responsibility. So thank you, Ms. Cook, for your comments. Next, Community Member, State Unit, and the community.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Blaze. I'm a local author. I am moved to the DOE. I wanted to introduce my series to you all. It's a fictional series about dogs against wolves. Uh, the plan is to get it into the schools, in all the schools.
I'm sorry, can you just, just step back? Just, I mean, if you talk, but when, because you, you, you enunciate so well that it projects really deep.
Uh, my plan is to get it into all the New York City schools. Uh, I not only want to get my books into every school, I want to take it to an animated movie. But I also realize the importance, the importance of our youngsters knowing that they can do fictional writing. The Shrek franchise has made over $4 billion, and we have only been consumers in the kind of books that turn into those movies. So now when they see Kevin Blaze, they say, wait a minute, that idea that's in my head, I could actually start to work on it because I have someone that looks like me that sat in these same seats, that is doing this work, that is trying to turn their work into animated movies. Nobody has a better imagination than our youngsters. The problem is that, is that the only representation that they're seeing is rappers and athletes. So I've come to change that. The world is getting much smaller, and our youngsters need to know that there are other options out there for them to participate in. I also created an introduction to creative writing course, where I talk about trademarks, NDAs, um, uh, copyrights. Uh, I teach the components of creative writing because it's something that you can benefit of, benefit from if they are just that they can do it. Uh, my other book is A Home Buyer's Book, where I'm teaching us why, why it takes us so long to buy our first house living in America. As of 2018, blacks in America's average age to buy their first house was 48 years old. We're going backwards. We own more houses in America in the past than we do now, and nobody's teaching our youngsters the process. You shouldn't be waiting until 48 years old to purchase your first house. But again, nobody's teaching. They're not teaching at home. We're not teaching in the schools. And this is where I come in. So I tell people I have the best words, I have information and entertainment, and I also have a, um, yes, for The Home Buyer's Book as well. Uh, I'll be in the audience if anybody, I have flyers, business cards, and I'm just there to introduce myself. Thank you.
State John again?
Uh, author Kevin Blaze.
L A I Z. L A I Z. All right, thank you. Comments or questions? Uh, we'll start, um, Assembly Member Waterman. Assembly Member Waterman. And then she was feeling well and she was going to join us online. Giovanni? You had no comment? Giovanni? Giovanni? Uh, Blackup, and then Pierre. Where did Pierre go? Mr. Gideon? Please join the line. Please note, you're, I'm sorry, hold on one second. One second, one second. Please join the line as well. Thank you. Uh, Tamisha, I, I, there were six. I missed one. Who? Monica, Assembly Member Waterman is going to be on. Um, go ahead. Let you go first, since you're up there.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Giovanni Pequon. I serve as Chief of Staff and Education Liaison for Councilmember Rita Joseph of the 40th Council District. Great to be with you all this evening. A couple of updates on our end. Councilmember Joseph at the last stated meeting, which was on February 13th, last Thursday, passed a piece of legislation focused on expanding access to student journalism across New York City high schools. And this piece of legislation is calling on the Department of Education to focus on research and data in looking to see which schools have student newspapers and student journalism clubs for youth, because this is one of our biggest initiatives that we are passing and fighting for this year. So we successfully passed that bill. We also held a hearing on special education services in New York City public schools on January 30th. We had a lot of parents, educators, advocacy groups discuss the concerns and issues that they face when it comes to special education across our city. And Councilmember Joseph also had New York City public schools there as well to ask some questions in regards to the issues that many parents face, whether it may be with their IEPs or school busing and so forth. So if you are of, know someone or you yourself are experiencing issues in related to special education, please feel free to reach out to our office. Councilmember Joseph chairs the Education Committee in the New York City Council. So if you have any education concerns, particularly related to anything in New York City's public schools, feel free to reach out to us. Um, in the community, we have a couple upcoming events that, um, our office has shared with the community board to be disseminated out to your mailing list. So we'll be sure to promote that. Councilmember Joseph will be doing a storytime at the Flatbush Branch, Brooklyn Public Library on Friday. It's going to be a Black History Month storytime. So if you have any youth or know anyone, please let them know to come out. As always, our office has housing assistance with the Churches United for Fair Housing from 11:00 AM to 5:00 PM every Thursday, and on Wednesday from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM, led by FTC as well. Um, just a reminder, 3K and pre-K applications are open and the application um, window closes on February 28th. So if you have any young ones or, you know, if anyone who has 3K or pre-K kids, make sure they go to the myschoolsnyc.com account and they log in and they apply for 3K. If you also need help navigating early childhood education care or anything of the sorts in the community, feel free to reach out to our office. Tomorrow, the council member will be chairing an important oversight hearing led by the Committee on Education focused on early childhood education centers across the city. We have been seeing attempted closure to early childhood education sites and providers have been experiencing a lot of issues with their leases and the support that they get from the city. So we will be having an oversight hearing in the New York City Council to address that issue. In another token, we obviously know that immigration is a huge concern, particularly right now with the new federal government. Our office has been hosting Know Your Rights webinars and resources for community members. So if you ever hear of, and catch any wind of anything, feel free to reach out to our office as well. And lastly, D-DEF is a huge issue in our district and our community. We have gotten a lot of calls and complaints in regards to that. If you or you know of any one who's experiencing those concerns, feel free to reach out to our office. Thank you.
Thank you. Bianca? Wait, is, uh, Assembly Member, are you on? Assembly Member? Ms. Stevenson, come on up.
Good night, Community Board Seventeen. Um, good night, Chair Daly, all members of the board. Uh, my name is Bianca Stevenson. I am the Community Board Liaison to CB9, used to be here. And Catherine has graciously agreed to switch me today because I have a conflict next week. So she's going to go to CB9. Okay, so I just have a few announcements. As you all know, that, um, Community Board application for this season is now closed. And, um, you will be hearing from us, you know, those of you who had to reapply, you members who did apply by the end of March, beginning of April. If you are appointed to your board, then the appointment would become immediate. Um, there's a few things coming up at Borough Hall. Um, the Borough President, um, he has free, um, there's free tax prep going on in Borough Hall until BP Renoso will have that until April the 9th. Incomes of $65,000 or less for an individual, incomes of $93,000 or less with dependents are eligible. So you make an appointment online and you can come down to Borough Hall for free tax prep. Um, the FY26 capital applications are now open. Um, city agencies, nonprofits, cultural institutions, and public schools are eligible to apply. Um, those, I don't have flyers here, but, um, all the flyers were sent to your board office, so you guys could probably access it through Ms. Farah. Um, also, the 2025 Borough Cultural Grant Program funding is also applica, also open. New York City Tourism Foundation is now accepting applications for the 2025 Borough Cultural Grant Program. Grants help with marketing and promotions of arts and cultural programs and events. Um, you can apply for that one until March 3rd at 5:00 PM. Also coming up at the Cotillo Library, you can speak with, um, one of our, um, the Borough Hall's constituent services representatives at the Cotillo Library. And that's every other Monday until May the 12th. Finally, homeowners benefit an NOPV info session on February the 20th. The NYC Department of Finance and BP Renoso are hosting a session on how to lower your property taxes. That will also take here, take place at Borough Hall, and the session will be held from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. And that's all my, everything I have for you today. Thank you very much.
Hello, can everyone hear me now? Hello? Hello?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. I'm a bit under the weather today. My Dalton Robinson is there from my team. So please bear with my voice. I'm so sorry. Thank you, um, Chair. Thank you to the board here and the members, and thank you to our district manager. Um, I want to thank everyone for coming out to my, my swearing in, um, last month. Thank you so much for your support. This weekend, we just had the Black Legislative, um, Caucus Weeking, and we were able to bring over 100 people from the district to Albany to go to workshops and there was events. And one of the biggest workshop we kicked off was to talk about our bill, the New York State Officer Gun Violence Prevention Act. Um, I, that act, basically, I don't know if everybody, I, I think I mentioned this before. The White House has closed the Office of Gun Violence Prevention. The state is the, the highest level of government that has a, um, that is rolling out a plan and have an Office of Gun Violence Prevention. We put in a bill to make sure that no matter who's in office, that the Office of Gun Violence on a state level do not go anywhere. We want to expand it, make sure it has more funding and support for the nonprofits underground to help reduce gun violence. Um, we have a couple of upcoming events. We have a mammogram. Dalton will have the flyers there to make sure that we are for Women History Month. And we also will have our, um, Vital Voice Meeting that we do monthly. It's an 8058 Vital Voice Community Meeting. We will be having job opportunities. There'll be over 25, um, employers there. There will also be entrepreneurship, um, support. Our youth will be displaying what they, um, their skill set with entrepreneurs and small business support with Small Business Administration and Small Business Services. This was at PSI66 for one to five, a partnership with Department of Labor and, um, of various agencies. Um, we do have, I know my time is short, so I just want to go over one quick thing. Um, the Castle Project, there's a project that's being built, um, that they would like, um, the Castle 1481 Troy Ave. We know we stand in support of, um, the community board along with, um, my, the council member and Senator that we stand united with the community members that there's a lot of things that, uh, answer questions and things that poses a health risk to our community members. So we want to make sure that they, uh, DEC have a conversation with us. Letters were sent out on all levels and also to help the expansion until we have a conversation about how the impact is to our community. So, um, Dalton, like I said, is there. I want to also clarify one thing. Another thing we had, um, uh, someone was murdered recently. They, the murder happened outside the district. And unfortunately, it is someone that lives within the district. We are working with our anti-violence group to provide support for the families. We had a number of shootings and people murdered, um, from the year kicked off, even though gun violence is down. One is too many, and we had one too many already for the area. I am going to, um, finish off right now with that, and I think that is about it. So thank you so much for this time. And I'm so sorry my voice is the way it is, and I, I am working on feeling better. So thank you so much. I appreciate everyone. And Dalton has other updates that he can share. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Gideon, I don't see the outside of the podium. Is there somebody over there? Are there, I'm sorry, are there any questions for the Assembly Member? Dalton, she said you have flyers to put in the back. They're in the back already. Uh, thank you. Mr. Gideon?
Uh, good evening to everyone. Um, good evening and greetings, um, Chair Roderick Daly, uh, the executive officers, uh, district manager, Sheriff Fraser was not here. And of course, the Assistant District Manager, who's been very helpful, the community board members, elected officials, and their representatives. Um, my name is Pierre Gideon. I'm the Brooklyn Board Director at the. My name is Edgar Gideon. I'm the Brooklyn Board Director at the Community Affairs Unit within the Mayor's Office. I definitely want to just want to come by and say hello to everyone. I'm not new to here, but I'm new in this capacity. And also just to bring greetings from the Mayor's Office. But before I go to that too, I would like to say it's a continued tradition that the Chair was, Chair started earlier in celebration of, you know, Black History Month. The first, the very first person to actually achieve, hold on, let me tell you. Give me one minute, please. What's your right now? Yeah, so there was an African American who actually earned his first doctorate within the Americas. And this was happened in 1876. He earned his doctorate from Yale University. And also to, you know, he did incredible work in the, in the field. So I wanted to bring at least, you know, continue that tradition. In addition to that too, I wanted to say, you know, congratulations to everyone, you know, who continues to do the work within the community, whether, you know, you're doing books, you know, everything is inspired to someone who sees it, you know, who can actually learn from it. So thank you everyone for that, for the work that you're doing. And in terms of the Mayor's Office, there's a lot of things that's got, that's been going on. As of right now, there's over 20,000 illegal guns removed from our streets. $30 billion, you know, back in your pockets, you know, through, you know, through different, different things that have been done through our office. And also to, you know, $2 billion in medical debt has been forgiven. Alongside, you know, 4.7 million total jobs have been brought into the Adams Administration. And there's still more things that have been done currently right now to actually bring more, more things to community needs, jobs especially for people who are within the minority communities who need it. And there's plenty of programs that the Mayor is funding to actually help make that happen. So I wanted to bring that forward, some of that information forward today, and also to let you know that Access Benefits NYC provides a lot of benefits, you know, whether it be help with tax, whether it be help, you know, if you're a business owner. All of that stuff is free and is provided through the city as well too. And yeah, I think that's one of the, some of the major things I wanted to bring up. I think the last thing I'll say too is that we're going to have a, a jobs, if you want to call it jobs fair, that's happening on February 27th, that's Thursday, Jobs NYC, February Hiring Hall. So there will be agencies there, other private employers there as well too, who will either be offering jobs on the spot or actually be, you know, offering opportunities to help people get jobs. So please feel free to go on New York City's jobs website. Thank you.
I had a question for Mr. Gideon. See, now Mr. Haradia? So is there someone in front of you, Mr. Haradia? I think I threw our jacket. I can't see. Ah, Tamisha, come on up.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tamisha Thompson. I'm Deputy Chief of Staff for Councilmember Mealy of the 41st District. I sent greetings from the member. Unfortunately, she couldn't make it today. I have a few updates. So this upcoming, well, tomorrow, Thursday, the council member is partnering with the Brooklyn Children's Museum from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the Black Future Festival. So if you guys have time, you can bring the kids, you can stop by. Tickets can be purchased at Brooklyn Kids, brooklinkids.org/BFF. This upcoming Saturday, the member is going to be hosting her monthly Community Advancement Board meeting at our office located at 400 Rockaway Avenue from 11:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. We're going to be having special guest speakers. The CEO of the Brooklyn Children's Museum will be there giving a presentation. And also, we're going to be having Mr. Stephen Wilson, who is also a owner of a Black Art Museum history. So it's going to be very culture around Black excellence and how art reflects on us. Mondays, the member is still hosting two free immigration attorneys. You can contact our office. We will put your information into the system and someone from Community Immigration Services will reach out to you to make an appointment. Tuesday, the member has housing services. We have a housing assistant that can come in with, you know, if you need assistance with rent or things like that, resources on that level, he will be able to assist you. Our office is open on Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Thursday is walk-ins, Fridays is appointments only. I will be here until the end of the meeting to answer any of your questions or concerns. Thank you for having me.
Thank you. You said that on the home time, 12:30 on Saturday, what's the beginning time?
11:00 a.m.
So it's 11 to 12:30?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Mr. Haradia, are there any other legislative, Dr. O'Leary, online? That's the only person I see up there.
Rachelle, so from Congresswoman Evette Clark's office.
Yeah, you speak after Mr. Haradia.
Thank you, Chair Daly. Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Haradia. I'm the Legislative Communications Liaison for Councilmember Farah Lewis. Pleasure to be here this evening. I just want to go over a couple of community updates from the month of January. Many of the folks in this room attended the Clarendon Library reopening that we had in partnership with Brooklyn Public Library. In January, we're extremely excited that we were able to expedite this long overdue community resource to get it opened from the originally planned spring deadline and coordinate with Department of Design and Construction to get this moved up to January. And we also appreciate President Linda Johnson for coming out and joining us for the ceremony. I want to quickly touch on some of the activities that have happened around the Costle Waste Transfer Station Initiative that's been happening that we've been working on fighting against. We brought a few letters of the, of the, we brought a few copies of the letter we sent on February 7th to Commissioner Maher of the State Department of Environmental Conservation in response to many of the concerns from the community that they were not adequately notified by this. And we were also coordinating with our city agencies, DSNY as well as DEP. That's the Sanitation and Environmental Protection Commissions respectively. And we did receive a response, and today we are now working along with Assemblymember Monique Chandler Waterman on this and teaming up to make sure that we can communicate with the community board on further initiatives to make sure that we're all working in conjunction on this matter. So thank you to her senior advisor, Floby and Galbry for making that outreach to our office. This month, we also conducted a Know Your Rights seminar with the Flatbush Development Corporation and New York Immigration Coalition with over 130 people on a Know Your Rights seminar regarding all of the recent raids from the Immigration Customs Enforcement that's happening due to the Trump administration. We also are working on other initiatives in City Hall to make sure that we do a study on sanitation issues. We know that the DSNY has proposed a number of new initiatives that are harming homeowners in relation to trash set out times, and we're introducing a bill, intro 1186, to mandate that the DSNY actually does a study to see how the new set out times and see how the trash bins are affecting religious communities in all corners of the city. So upcoming things that are happening, we have a Department of Finance Tax Clinic. We have a date that's coming up next week on the 24th at Nazareth Regional High School. I left the flyers in the back. It looks like this. We also have one that's happening at Christian Heritage Ministries. That's in the Flatlands neighborhood. That's on the following week. So we are hoping that a lot of homeowners can come out and get some questions answered in regards to their notice of property value. We also have a number of other events for Black History Month with Unapologetic Black Celebration for next week. That's happening at, that's happening at the Brooklyn Museum, as well as a Black History Family Cookoff that's happening at Kamba at PS 361. So on behalf of Councilmember Farah Lewis, I wish you all a beautiful evening. I'll be in the back till the end of the meeting if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other question? Sorry, the trash cans. Can you have the personal, in charge of the city, like the council sanitation component? Because there's a burden on any individuals and additional cost to individuals. Because you have to find out, there's a real study done and the impact, financial impact that it has on homeowners to be able to buy three or four, whatever the number is, of garbage cans. And if you have a multiple dwelling, you have to have more and economically, especially the rise of everything else, you know, congestion price and all that stuff is just, it's just too much.
Right.
So is there something that the council member can do through the board office or in conjunction with somebody else to discuss that and have it removed, actually?
Right. Thank you so much for the question, Chair. So in regards to the mandated city bins, so just to clarify for background, the city is mandating covered bins specifically to New York City purchased ones. Those are actually not required until 2026. You can use your own 55 gallon bin until that date when they will actually start mandating that you have the one that you purchased from the city. Now, in terms of, the city council is looking at a number of ways to sort of counteract what is happening, whether we're trying to, right now, we're in budget season, so we're pushing for the administration to fund subsidies, especially for seniors who are on fixed incomes, because they're the ones ultimately who have to pay the largest price for homeowners who have any units from 1 to 9 units. Now, the problem is, you might remember from the last general election that there were ballot proposals. And because people were not adequately informed by the administration, and that the one that actually authorized more powers by the Department of Sanitation to change the set out times and to mandate bins passed, because people were not adequately aware of what those ballot proposals did. And that pretty much gave the mayor unlimited power to set those fines and to set those regulations. That is a city charter revision that this council is not so easily able to resolve. However, we are definitely working through the budget process to see if there's ways that we can subsidize the costs, even though the homeowners will still ultimately have to use those bins. So we'll see how the budget process plays out, but Councilmember Lewis is definitely trying to find ways to subsidize those costs for our constituents.
Thank you very much. Are there any more questions? Yes. Go ahead, ask, ask away.
Yes, Mr. Haradia?
Yes, my question is regarding, are you aware that there is a backlog in the distribution of the trash cans? Because this weekend, I had two phone calls asking me, do I know anything? Because I helped them request it. And it's been almost three months and they still haven't received it. They, one of them called last week and they told him there's a backlog, but they didn't give them any information. So I was wondering if you guys could take a look into that.
We've definitely heard from a number of constituents saying that the bins were delayed. I remember I ordered mine and it took three months to come, and that was last year, because I ordered it right when the form opened up for my house. So I definitely hear that, and the council member has definitely been hearing those. Specifically, while it's a private vendor, we've been told, you know, the city doesn't really control its auto, environmental control, blah, blah, blah. If you need to fight a ticket as a result, you can come to our office and we will help individuals fight their sanitation tickets if it's because the bins have been delayed. This is not something that the DSNY wants to compromise on, but if you or a neighbor have gotten a ticket, our office will help you fight it, as long as you can show us the receipt that it came, you know, that it's extremely delayed, we'll help you fight that.
It's not a question of the tickets. It's just a wondering what's happening because they paid for it three months ago and they can't get any answer.
We can help reach out to it. Again, it's a private vendor, but in terms of getting any fines, that's where we would come in. But if you can share with us, our contact information is the back. We can reach out to DSNY to see if they can make an exception.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead, quickly.
I tried to get since like from October, I've been trying and I called.
I'm sorry, you need to stick your name, stick your name.
I, Norma Watson. I tried to call up from October to see if I could get three. I could not. So then I, they said they don't have any. It run out. So I was told by 311 that I could go to the Home Depot. I have to go to three different Home Depot. Anyway, they were, I got it at Cropsy Home Depot and it's cheaper than even what the city is selling it for. I paid $37 for mine. So if anybody's looking, you could search the Home Depot. It'd have the logo and everything on it. And it's cheaper than the $50 that the city is quoting for it.
Thank you for that information.
Thank you, Chair.
Wait, Dr. O'Leary?
Hi, good afternoon. I won't be long. So I'm with, I'm the Director of Constituent Services for Congresswoman Evette Clark. Wanted to let you all know that if there are anyone with any immigration issues, that they could definitely contact our office. We're working hard and heavy with the immigrant community right now. A number of events that we do will basically be virtual, because we don't want to create events that will be magnets for ICE detainment. And so to find out more about the various events, we ask everyone, go to our website and sign up for our e-newsletter where you'll get information and updates, and it's clark, C-L-A-R-K-E dot house dot gov. And if you need to reach me in our district office, it's 718-287-1142. And again, I'm Rachelle O'Neill, Director of Constituent Services. Thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much. Any other elected official, representative online?
Yes, hi.
Go ahead.
Yes, hi. This is Taniqua Strong, the Chief of Staff of Senator Roxanne J. Persaud. Just want to let you know about our upcoming events.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. You said that too fast. State the name again.
Okay. Taniqua Strong, the Chief of Staff of Senator Roxanne J. Persaud of the 19th Senatorial District. Wanted to let you know, you're welcome. We'll let you know about our upcoming events on February 26th. Senator Persaud is hosting our mobile office at Vendalia Senior Center, where we are bringing the office to the community to provide resources and any information that the community would like to receive from us. Then on March 4th, at our district office, which is located at 1222 East 96th Street, we're hosting our Kamba. Kamba will be on site and they will be providing SNAP enrollment on site. So if anyone would like to come, please feel free to contact our office to sign up at 718-649-7653. And if you have any questions, we do know there's a lot that's going on in the community. So if you have any concerns, you can call us at that number that I just shared, or you can email us at persaud, P-E-R-S-A-U-D at NYSenate.gov. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we are at the Rock Hall. Mr. Secretary?
Good afternoon, everyone. Please just say here when you get your name. Affey? Anderson? Antoine? Parkredin? Call every name, don't skip me. I didn't skip a name. Celia Bellin? Celia Bellin? David Botswan? David Botswan? Teresa Beretton? Beretton. Teresa Beretton? Venicia Colan? Venicia Colan? Asher Cunningham? Daly?
Here.
Herminia Daniels? Thank you.
Here, here.
We got it. Natasha Duncan? Natasha Duncan? LaShawn Freeman? Charles Galbraith? Charles Galbraith? Rose Graham? Gil Grandison? Ronald Green? Ronald Green? Michael Hill? Michael Hill? Whitney Humphrey? Whitney Humphrey? Kevin Jason?
Sit here. Thank you.
Doris Jones? Doris Jones? Tricia, Tricia Lewison? Edith Mark? Brandon Matheran? Brandon Matheran? Daniel McCabe? Daniel McCabe? Donna Grant? Thank you. Jabril Morris here. Fatima Mohammed? Fatima Mohammed? Khadija Aluo?
Thank you.
Mazraq Oni? Mazraq Uni. Kariato.
Let me set that right.
June Persaud. June Persaud. Deborah Pointer. Deborah Pointer. Erin Roth. Erin Roth. Bernadette Selby. Bernadette Selby. Kimberly Shelley. Kimberly Shelley. Antoinette Smart. Antoinette Smart. Tyrone Sterns. Tyrone Sterns. Kamara Swaby. Simone Sylvester. Hesla Terson. Hesla Terson. Margarine Vigilant. Kenrick Westcott. Kenrick Westcott. Melanie Wilkerson. And Ivor Woods.
We're just double-checked to make sure that we have quorum, so we can vote on the minutes. Twenty-one, the 48 members of the board.
Anyone that just came in. I think Teresa.
Ms. Beretton.
Hi. Twenty-two is now the new head count.
I, I think we have 48 members, because I believe there are 48 members on the board. So quorum would be 24 times. Two plus one, so it's 25. So we don't have quorum. But we just for the record, November minutes are in your boxes in the emails. Please double-check them. They're working diligently to get December general, and hopefully February by March. Yes, Mr. Secretary? All right. Do you double-check any numbers?
Yeah, you're right.
Forty-eight, right? Okay. All right. So we do not have quorum, so we do not, we do have a number of licenses, but we do have to address, I know that, to sign off on them, but would you like to bring them up at this time? All the liquor license applicants, please step forward. Liquor license applicants, please step forward.
Good evening. Hassan Barker, the Commerce Committee Chair.
space. Liquor license event space.
Yeah. Sugar to Go LLC. I'm.
Right here, right here.
Hey, Ms. Watson, Ms. Watson.
Ms. Watson, right in front of me.
Come, come right there. All right. Ms. Quilox Lounge here? Quilox? Okay, they're not here. All right. And Zaria is here, and of course, we have our only cannabis license this evening, Legacy Lifestyle LLC. Who's representing?
Come forward.
Yeah, come right here. All right, so I will start with you, Ms. Watson, from Zaria, Event LLC. Oh, and by the way, just go right to the mic here, so they can hear you as well. All right. But just as a point of.
I'm sorry, Mr. here, can you just do a favor, just maybe just plug, unplug one of the mics, and just give them so they could face the audience, so they could see them, instead of their backs are turned to them. Just, yeah. That, please stand, face the audience, please stand, face the audience.
Yeah, come down here, Ms. Watson.
Everyone. Now, yeah, right now. Stand and face the audience, so they know, see you.
Got you. So Ms. Watson, you'll be just telling us about your business, pretty much the same exercise you went through last night, and the committee, I'm sorry, the board will ask you some questions, if there are any. But I did want to mention, so Quilox Lounge isn't here this evening, Chase Flavors isn't here, and Promise Lounge is not here as well, just to point clarity. But go right ahead, Ms. Watson.
Okay, good night. My name is Norma Watson. I am the owner of Zara Event Hall, and it's located at 1770 Nastron Avenue. We have this, we have a space that we occupy 80 plus people. Indoors, we have like 80 people, and we have a business outdoor, that everyone, during the summer, they rush to have that space. We make it so attractive and homely that everybody want outdoor, and that holds another 30 people. And we welcome small birthday parties, we welcome 50th, 60th, 70th, we welcome parties, baby shower, we welcome anything like meetings. We also accommodate a church on a Sunday in the community, because we think God will put God in every little thing. So even tonight, I have one there, they say they come to pray, which I said to them, just so it is what I see. So there, I leave them there praying, and when they pray, they're just like a family. So it's an access to the community. We're not that expensive. We try to go within our means and look at people's needs and work along with them, because some people, they can afford a big wedding, but they can afford a small place where we can make it comfortable, homely, and people can relax, and the wedding can go through just the same. So that's what we do. We don't, and we don't want to open until late. We close like 2 o'clock, but you know, grace period, we go already with we, with this call, we have to stay a little later. Anyway, that's much about it. And we don't have any problem in the community. We don't, we don't get tickets, because we try to be empowered, everything. So we are within the community. Anyone wish to come for a repass, I give them a big discount, it's always a very small discount, because I go sympathizing for everyone who have a family who passed away, and that's about us. We decorate also to make it pleasant for everyone. So that's about a little bit of what we do. So we welcome each and everyone in the community and all around. We thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. Appreciate that. Any questions for Ms. Watson before she finishes from the, from the board?
There's one here, Second Vice Chair.
Yeah. Good evening.
This side, good evening, Ms. Watson, right shoulder.
She's there. Okay. So to clarify, your license, the license you're applying for is so that your guests can serve liquor, or do you sell liquor, beer, wine?
You know what, I don't sell liquor. I, I don't drink, I don't sell, but my customer comes and he wants to serve. I think this is one of the main reasons why I have it, because when they want to serve, if I don't have a license to protect them, then I'm in trouble just as them, because then the community police will just rush in, and that's it. So I try to protect them by having the accommodation that everybody can be comfortable.
So basically, what she's asking is, are you asking for a liquor license for, to serve? Doesn't matter who drinks it. So is it, is it a new license that?
So a renewal license.
That's what she's asking.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Sugar to Go. How are you? Good evening. Good.
Good night, guys. Blaze, how you doing? I represent Sugar to Go, Sugar Restaurant, is a branch of a sugarcane restaurant that's been in the Caribbean community for 22 years. Sugar has been on New Kirk and Rogers. This is a second year. So we are just doing a renewal of our license. We are a nice trendy, upscale, fun restaurant that accommodates the Caribbean community, which is religion-based, and, you know, I think we have actually uplifted the corner that we're on. We've, the neighbors love us, because we've made it beautiful, and we've, you know, kind of been embraced by the neighborhood, and we're happy to be in Flatbush. I grew up in Flatbush, so we're just happy to be there and to be part of this community, Community Board 17. And that's it. Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, any questions?
Any questions from Ms. Watson?
Miss comes.
Sir, Sugar, I apologize. I did not.
I don't see any questions. All right. Thank you.
We do cater, we do cater as well. We do. So it's a full restaurant, so if anyone comes for an event, so we cater the entire day.
Absolutely.
All right, thank you. And, and we have Ms. McFatter from Legacy.
Shanduk.
Legacy Lifestyle Cannabis.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. My name is Shanduk McFatter. I am the CEO of Legacy Lifestyle Cannabis. This is my partner, Sylvester Emaness, Chief Operating Officer of Legacy Lifestyle Cannabis, and this is our attorney, Jeffrey Hoffman. So just so we know who's here up here with us. So we're applying for a license to open up a, an adult-use retail dispensary at 5901 5911 Church Avenue. We have received a card license in the condition, conditional adult-use retail dispensary license, which allows us to sell legalized cannabis. If you don't know, the MRCA was passed in, in 2021, and took rate, the sales in New York State is at 1 billion in retail sales in revenue. So we're not coming to this community with the first retail dispensary application. We're coming with an opportunity to bring it to East Flatbush and to generate revenue in East Flatbush for the community. Many may not know, but when the law was changed, there's a piece there that speaks about community reinvestment. Currently, I'm part of the New York Cannabis Retail Association, which is the largest retail association in New York, that holds over 200-plus retail dispensary licensed owner. I am on the board as the Director of Community Reinvestment and Outreach. I've been doing that for many years, dealing with community and building up communities. That is my passion, and through cannabis, my goal is to take that revenue and reinvest it back into our communities. So when we create sales revenue in this community board, there's a 4% tax that goes back to the local municipality that helps to build up the community. So I sit here and I listen, I hear non-provision communities talking about built-up opportunity, we're talking about taking a negative and turn that negative into a possible, into a positive. Our space will have security, we will have cameras all around protecting the space. We are a drive-thru, so we are, in this Black History Month, two black men looking to make history, become the first drive-thru dispensary within the state of New York. That is our goal. And so, any questions around the dispensary, we can answer any questions, I just wanted, I don't want to take up too much time, just wanted to give an explanation of the business that we're looking to be in East Flatbush.
Any questions? And this is from board members. I thought I saw her hand first. Your hand, sorry. Well, no, if you're not, you're not a board member, so I'm sorry, you couldn't, yeah, it's only for board members.
Yes, good evening. I'll be brief. Thank you for being very clear and detailed on your business. In this district, and quite frankly, throughout the city, there has been a lot of pushback, admittedly, with approving cannabis licenses because of the, of the presentation of it being a community detriment. So I was encouraged to hear that you mentioned that there is an aspect of what matters to you in terms of community reinvestment. I just wanted to know if you could offer a little more clarity on what that would look like with the collection of sales tax, where.
Sure, of course. So one, a dispensary itself bringing in tax revenue, so when someone, we look at where we at, so my vision is, we're not just going to bring revenue from East Flatbush, we're looking at the traffic that's coming up and down Church Avenue, Kings Highway, people that pass through our communities that don't spend money here anyway, right? So they pass through, they come, they make a purchase. The tax on that is 13%. 9% of that goes to the state, 4% of that goes to that local municipality, which is CB17, right? Then that 9% that the, that the state has also goes into a 40% reinvestment back into the community. So that means community-based organizations can, don't have to, you don't have to touch cannabis, you don't have to do nothing about cannabis, you just have to be able, you have to be providing services to communities that are disproportionately impacted by past marijuana laws. So if your organization is helping somebody who comes in these areas that's been already identified, then you can apply for resources, funds from this, from revenue throughout the state to help build up your communities. That's something that I'm working, working on and planning to be part of in Community Board 17. Somebody has a dispensary, that's our passion. So it's me and him, so we see our revenue, and we're talking about saving the community by taking some of our revenue that automatically goes back into gun violence prevention and community resources. That's part of our goal. You're welcome.
Mr. Cunningham, you had a quick question? I saw Mr. Cunningham. You, oh, it was answered, okay.
Second Vice Chair has a question.
I also had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you as well for your presentation. What are the closest approved legal cannabis locations to you?
So based on what we saw, the closest one is about a mile, mile and a half away. So the, we had to check the proximity map, right? And we had on the Commerce Committee a concerned member that we're worried we were too close to a school. Prior, before I did all, did it, after we got our lease and we've had taken possession of the property, we assured that we were clear, we submitted that to New York State Cannabis Management, and it proved, gave us proximity protection, 500 feet from a school, 1,000 feet from another local dispensary, licensed dispensary.
And you're in like the building that was the old Dunkin' Donuts?
Yes, the old Dunkin' Donuts.
Okay. And then with the size of that building, it's quite large. Are you just taking drive-through purchases? Are people supposed to stay in there at any time? Like, what's the nature of the business?
Question. So it is a retail dispensary space, so we'll have a retail community environment, you can come in, experience, we have bartenders, so we're going to be employing the community, we're going to put out for jobs for people that are from East Flatbush, to bring them in. If that's something that they want to learn in this, this industry that's being built in New York, to help bring people into this business is our goal. So we will definitely be hiring, and when people come into the space, they'll have someone that can engage with them. As well as someone just wants to pass through and pick up and purchase, they can, as well as we'll have delivery.
But they can't use onsite?
No, so it's a, it was an onsite consumption space, but New York State doesn't allow for you to smoke inside of any place where you're selling cannabis. That's against New York State regulations. It allows consumptions, you have the right space for air, everything else, but you can't smoke where you sell the cannabis products.
Okay, thank you.
You got it.
I think Jabril had one last comment, right?
My question was regarding to how, apology, sorry, did I ask a couple to somebody? I thought you were sitting down.
Oh, no, sorry. Board members can ask questions.
Asking if the toxin, the cannabis.
But Ms. Watson.
Only board members.
Yeah, it's only board members, so just, just have a seat.
Only, only members can ask questions.
I had a question, yes, regarding, regarding the process behind checking identification for participants. Is there going to be either like an ID scanner? Are you just clearing that? And what is the regulation behind that in all your business?
So, yes, we have, so we're, yes, obviously.
Sir, can you ask your question and answer both at the same time?
Okay. Yes, and I also wanted to gain clarity on the question from our Second Vice Chair. You mentioned about having bartenders, so can you also, just I guess, go in depth about your intent for the space? Are you planning to make a social club? Just explain bartender's idea in gathering, drinking, just going a little bit more of that. Excuse me, yes. My apologies. I'm very clear, and if not, you'll say bartender. So what, the correct term is bartender. Right? So, you can mix cannabis and alcohol. We gonna mellow them down when they running around there getting out of control. It's the mellow, not the act crazy and no disrespect to alcohol, right? But I'm just saying, this is a different type of, so the bartender is trained. You bring someone in. They might be somebody who's been smoking their whole life and decide, I want to get into this business now. We train them, and somebody now wants to come in and learn about it, so they've been trained, learned about cannabis, learned about, it's not just about flowers. You have edible, you have vapes, tinctures. It's, it's healing properties that people don't understand that we educate, not community on. So we want to bring people in, train and educate. When someone walks into the retail dispensary, they can meet someone, can help them understand what's happening there and help them make approaches that would make them feel better later on. Okay? Thank you, brother.
Oh, well, do that for me one more time, please. I was focused on the process behind checking age and identification.
So we uh, one with our security, we work with a company called Curate. It's an IT tech company. Uh, as well as our security company is Soul Link, right? So we, 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 and we have contracts with them where everything that happens through our process is being recorded. You see every step of every process, as well as you have to have your ID scanned. We have a process, ID goal, that checks every ID prior to even being able to make a purchase.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Time.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're running out of time.
Go ahead. Go ahead. Quickly. You get the last question. Go ahead.
Donna McLean Grant is the name. Uh, two follow-up questions. You mentioned about security. Will you have physical licensed security officers who are trained in cannabis safe that are licensed as security officers?
Second question.
Second question.
Is about your give back to the community, and I did hear you give some um, suggestions. Um, I guess we're looking to see how your funds will be sp- you know, sponsored contributions to daycare centers and different, you know, activities and organizations in the community. So I, I heard about the four percent, but your organization or your company has a relation to direct services in the community. If you can speak towards that. Because I'm sure you did some.
First one again was what? Security, security, okay. So yes, so we're currently in the process of checking the total cost for us to have armed security versus weather security. Uh, that's what we're gonna, uh, so we're not open here, so all those things are in our conversation. So we prefer to have armed security while we're there. We're also going to have electronic doors. It's not easily just walk in and walk out type of, type of environment. Okay? And when it comes to the community reinvestment, so I've been running a nonprofit myself for many years. And I know what it takes to build up fiscal capacity. I know what it takes to have to apply discretionary funds. And what I learned as being a leader of a nonprofit is that there's no sustainability. So in cannabis, I, my vision is sustainability. I'm, I'm not no longer applying for funds. I'm generating revenue. So in generating that revenue, I can now be, I've been at Community Board Seventeen for years having conversations. So when I hear that and I maybe to meet with someone, it's our discretion. When you show us your program and what you're capable of doing, and I come out with you and see how you're serving the community, we don't have to go through no red tape. If it makes sense, we want to support our community.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. Okay, so, thank you. So Jennifer, the FYI, um, we'll be taking the vote now, right?
I, I don't think we have quorum.
We still don't have quorum?
No, we do not.
Oh, boy, okay.
Um, has any one walked in after attendance?
No, I don't know who did.
No.
And and unfortunately, you know, uh, Legacy Lifestyle was here last month along with Sugar.
So what I'm going to do, I'm going to have to call a special meeting um, to do that. Which I kind of don't want to do, but I guess I'm going to have to do that.
Yeah, we do need to do that. It's fine.
It's fine. So can you do me a favor, please? Can you shoot me an email?
Yeah.
Requesting a special meeting so that um, we could have a special meeting for the license and minutes, right? So we have the license and the minutes.
Okay.
And the budget. Because we're also supposed to vote on the budget tonight, which is also, this is also due, plus estimation. Sorry, I can't step you back. I can move on to mission. Special meeting, that's special election.
Okay, when you guys have the special meeting, I don't know if you guys want to vote then or not, but when you guys do vote on it, since a few of the businesses are in the councilmember's district, I believe you guys are too. It's kind of iffy. I was trying to find that out. Um, can you please inform our office or if it was passed or?
That's fine.
Thank you.
Um, they are Sugar and uh, councilmember.
Louis.
Louis's district. Yes. Well, Ben, I'm here. And I'll chase, are not here.
Yeah.
But I know the two of you are in councilmember Louis's district. And you're councilmember Louis, um, Louis's district. Right, we have you across the street from the gas station. Next to, next to, next to the machine, she do it up. That's uh, that's you. No, that's yours. We're on this side.
Yeah.
That's you. All right, so we'll have a special meeting on that, and we'll try to get that done with the, to shoot me the email, all right? So we have three items, thank you, gentlemen, three items to discuss in the special meeting. One is the budget, two is the minutes, and three, um, the but, the license, right? So, um, ADM Farah. Can somebody look at the website and tell me what meeting we have on Tuesday? Can somebody look at the website and tell me what meeting we have on Tuesday? Well, I'll do that. Let's move on to special report, board members. I know I have two comments. Are any of the board members have any comments? Are they just board members? So two comments. Comment number one, um, March twenty-second, um, I would love to have all of the board members come out to the naming of uh, the convent room on March twenty-second, I think it's thirty-five twenty-one. Um, Church Avenue, the re-naming of convent room for uh, myself and uh, the lounge for Curtis Nelson and the kitchen for Dawn Swoody, for the, for the community, for the arts. So we'd love to have your support on that. Two, um, as you know, basketball, uh, thing for young people. So on Wednesdays, we have basketball for young people to come out within the community at Winthrop Junior High School. We're co-partnering with uh, Sesame Flyers. So if you know, for eighteen adults, right? Out, get them off the street. They love to play ball. It's winter, it's cold, come to seven to nine. And and and, young people, that just spins. If you know, you, you know, you think you are ball, you're feeling like good draw. My friend Bridget's on that. She, she breaks ball a little bit, right? Um, so to come out for that, did they, did they get a big, there's a meeting on Tuesday.
There's the committee meeting.
So, um, Farah, can you send out if for a special meeting on Tuesday? The twenty-fifth. So three things on the agenda. One, approval of the minutes. Two, approval of the, the budget. And three, approval of the license, and it would be virtual. Okay, it would be virtual. Thank you. Um, before I move on to the, are there any other committee? Oops. Um, I would like to acknowledge Mr. LeBron Burnett. Right, I would like to acknowledge Mr. LeBron Burnett, who, so LeBron can stand, Mr. Burnett? He was a former board member and also former first vice chair and head of transportation for Community Board Seventeen. So I would like to acknowledge him. Um, John Bunny Street, uh, on a couple of months ago, that would be, that's scheduled for May sixteen, twenty-twenty-five. Um, May sixteen, twenty-twenty-five, right at Erasmus High School, so right outside Erasmus. It will be called John Bunny, um, John Bunny Way, right? So please do come out, please put on calendar, May sixteen, twenty-twenty-five, at um, eleven AM. New business. New business. See you, Ron. Can I get a mention to a chair? I see, to be sure. You get your hand up first. Go ahead. State your name. Second.
Seconded.
Uh, you can, Mr. Mike, that's not fair. Somebody else? All right, Gerald Robinson. On it, for the German, say aye.
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 All right, so now, the time is now nine thirty, and we're in the German. Really come out, really come out. Can we turn off those phones?
Good night, everyone.